Well, welcome to the regular city council meeting of the city of Starbuck for November 12th. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Joan, if you'd call a roll, please.
Mayor Swenson.
Here.
Councilor Gorder.
Here.
Councilor Tafe.
Here.
Councilor Bockel.
Here.
Councilor Christensen.
Here.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. I don't know if anybody has any comments or questions or additions to the agenda.
I just have one under new business, item 21. I have 2024 preliminary budget.
Oh, okay.
2025, everybody else is correct down there.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the correction.
Okay. Any questions on claims for payment or minutes, any changes to the minutes or anything? Okay. So I have a motion from Councilor Tafe to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
And we have a second from Councilor Christensen. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. First, next item on the agenda is, anyone before the council, and we have Nick Kuss with Witzeth here. Welcome, Nick.
Hi, I'm Nick Kuss. Just have one quick thing to go over, so I'll try and keep it pretty short. But some letters went out pertaining to the lead service line inventory that we did earlier this year. As far as that goes, there was, I believe, 27 known lead and galvanized lines. And around 300 that fit into the category of unknown. The primary reason they fit into that category of unknown is because we don't know what the material was when they installed the water main. So between the water main and the curb stop is the primary location where we didn't know what the material was. And that's for plans older than 1981. We didn't have any records of those, so difficult to know what you got when it's buried in the ground. And so the letters went out and it explained to the homeowners. There was two letters, one for the known lead service lines and one for the unknowns, or for the unknowns. And then it explained what they could do as far as testing or those kinds of things. And then it explained the funding very briefly. And so one thing I can give you an update on is what the timeframe will be for any kind of a project that you'd be seeking the grant money for. The timeframe for that would be to submit the proposed project to the drinking water revolving fund through the PFA. And get on the project priority list, and the timeframe for that is May of 2025, that's when that will be due by. And then that would just be a cost estimate and a letter that would go to the, yep?
I'm curious as to, I know like in my residence there I have a plastic, or polyline coming into the house. But I'm not sure what it is beyond the curb stop towards the main.
Yep.
So, have no idea.
Yep, and that would, that one would have fallen under the category of unknown. If you're concerned about it, I guess you can do the testing, that might show, it might come up with lead, might not.
We've tested it quite a few times out here, Randy, and it's.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, yeah, and if it's never come up, yeah, if it's never come up hot, I guess I wouldn't be concerned about it. Okay. And then the next step after that would be if they, once we get that submitted, that gets you on the project priority list. And then the next step is to prepare an intended use plan, which is a more detailed description of the project that you want to do and an updated cost estimate. And then at the end of the year, in October timeframe, they take all of the applications that they got, all of the intended use plans, and then they generate the list in order of priority. And then if it gets funded, then you would proceed to preparing plans and specs for construction in 2026. And that'd be like the shortest timeframe that you could do to get the lead service line funding. Well, it's 100% grant for any of the known lines, so for the 27 that are known, we can pursue those. For the unknowns, they're not going to fund unknown. Maybe the department will come out with some additional guidance as to determining their, determining what the pipe is, and they might fund some projects like that later. But for right now, the priority appears to be just taking care of the ones that they know about. And then if it's unknown, they'll start to tackle those once they've taken care of the ones that are known, is the impression that I got, so.
Would the 100% money, would that be going to the city before the project began, or do we need to budget accordingly for this project?
So work like the other drinking water revolving fund projects, you'd have to plan for it. And then you get reimbursed as construction proceeds, yep.
What were the numbers again? You said 27 known and how many unknown?
300 and some, I think it's on the, Joan has the exact numbers, if you need those. Or I can look them up too and get you the exact. So that's, that's all I got unless there's any other questions about the letters or the, or the process.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, the next item on the agenda was Brian Frederick, who was going to request that they hold meat raffles at the tavern. And he can't be here tonight, so we'll put that off until the December meeting. Next item on the agenda is myself. I just wanted to update the council at, I went to a school board meeting on childcare. And the Lakes Area and Richmond childcare that's in the old high school and Win Academy, they're having some financial difficulties. And they're asking to be, asking the school district to be part of the school district. And the school district can't do it all alone, so they may be reaching out to the communities of Glenwood, Starbuck, and, and all over to seek some backup funding to, to help out. And so I think it'd be a terrible loss for Starbuck if we didn't have that daycare. And I talked to the temporary superintendent that filled in for Chip Rankin when he was on active duty. And he now works down in La Coo Parle. And he said they had the same problem there, that the childcare was looking to close. So families started planning ahead and looking to the future and started looking at other places and their, of course, their tenants dropped and, you know, and so forth. But they got some insurance and they got some funding back lined up, which they haven't had to use yet, I understand. But they guaranteed that the childcare was going to stick around and be part of the community. So their enrollment has started to go up again, you know, and so forth. And, and I think that could happen in Starbuck too, or whatever. So anyway, I just wanted to, no decisions have been made yet or any further word after the board meeting. But I just wanted to bring it up to kind of let the council know and, and the community, so. Next on the agenda is to, is the police department, Chief Mitch Johnson, so.
Let's know what kind of pending calls, I'm just kind of trying, I have to go, just letting you know. Okay, Speth, the highlights for October, we had calls for service, 212. Again, in September, we had 237. I don't know if you guys have any questions regarding any of the calls for service in the last month? Just down a little bit, the previous month? The only other thing I had, oh, there were a couple of things I have, was the SRO contract. I did send it off. Board, school board did approve it, I guess would just be, I looked at the salaries and I, from my understanding, the salaries aren't increasing through the union contract. So basically, it's just a, I just factored in how we always done it every year and did a three-year contract. And those figures that are in the contract right now are what, or is what it's set at.
You don't think, we haven't finalized the.
Yeah, so according to, according to the, the officers, that there's no step increases or anything to that nature that they're asking for. So that's why I kind of, and then it was kind of the end of the month, so I just want to, we always, don't know how long the union stuff's going to go, but our contract ends with them in December. So I kind of wanted to get that approved, and then if anything happens, I know we can go back and amend it and resubmit to them another. If it's something were changed drastically from these numbers, we could always amend this and then send that back to them for, for the look.
Yeah, I don't know if we'll, we meet with the union again on the 14th, so.
Yeah, I was just speaking with them, and according to them, they didn't have anything that was going to drastically increase the salaries. And no, no further steps, so I just went off what they're currently, what their current steps are at.
We'll probably hold off approving it tonight, but we're going to have to have a special meeting on the, on the budget and so forth before the end of the month, and so.
Okay. Okay. And the only other thing I have is just the, I sent you like an MOU last week, just because last week, for last month, regarding my, what's going on with just, I'm covering Amber's shifts due to her maternity leave. And as we have in the past, we've always looked at, right now I'm covering her shifts, which is generally outside of my realm of work. Like I work, I'm working holidays, which I generally don't work. I'm covering 70 hours a week of, of call time, which I generally don't cover. So I was just looking at if I guess if it's compensated for anytime I have to work a holiday, or I at least have to take call above and beyond what I've already do, that I at least could occur a call time or call outs. And that's generally what we've done in the past until she's off leave, and then I would go back to as it is.
That's what we did last time, wasn't it?
Yes.
You see Amber's still in the office?
She's doing light duty, yep, she's due on the 19th, so, but she's on light duty, she's been on light duty for the last month, at least, month and a half.
What does she handle?
Just anything nonviolent, a lot of child protection issues, any, anything that she can handle over the phone, blight stuff. So we've been keeping her busy, but she's been, she's been, she's been busy. But she'll be on light duty until she has the baby and then, or until, as long as she can go. Again, but it's coming up, the due date, so.
It's 12 weeks?
She's taken the 12 weeks, yes. So, and then from there, she'll have to, you know, FMI and use whatever time she has for that, so. But I, I guess that was the only stipulation is just that I would be compensated for that, because again, that's normally that, my, my hours that I work. And generally, if I'm out to holiday, usually I'm, I get paid, but not holiday, as, as holiday work, getting paid, not at, at that rate, so.
So last year, we had during contract negotiations, discussion about having part-time help, their wages going up, is there any way to get part-time?
I, we have the three part timers that we have, or two part timers that we have. We have the third one who's fighting cancer right now, so he hasn't worked for over a year. And then the other two are full-time, they've been picking up some eight-hour shifts here and there. But they work on the weekends that Amber's scheduled to work, so that leaves me to cover those shifts.
Yeah, and I guess just my concern then is, you know, trying to budget for next year, not knowing exactly how much overtime is going to be and stuff like that, it's hard to get an exact estimate for what our numbers are going to be.
Yeah, yeah, you, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to tell you, so. Generally, like I said, and there's, there are cases where, you know, we just, it's, it's tight. We do have a mutual agreement with, you know, Glenwood PD that we've been covering, they've been covering, we've been covering them and they've been covering some of us, which comes to help alleviate some of this overtime, but.
I don't want you to get burned out.
No. No, and so what it comes down to is all, there's going to be overtime, of course, with this, because we're short, we're short-staffed. So it's either, but the best way is for me just to cover, to alleviate generally most of the overtime, so.
So what you're looking at is doing the same thing that.
Same thing as we did last time.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we approve that same overtime and whatever.
Okay, just one second. 651, 612, can I just give you a call in a second?
Yeah. I think we have a closed session at the end of the meeting and maybe we'll discuss it then.
I'm sorry, I messed it, I was paying attention to the.
We have a closed session at the, to talk about contracts and, at the end of the meeting here. And so, you know, maybe the council can discuss it then.
Yeah, that's fine, whatever. Okay.
Does somebody else want to second it?
I would second that we do the same agreement that we had last time.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve the memorandum of understanding, seconded by Councilor Tafe. If there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Other than that, I don't have anything else unless you guys have any questions for me regarding anything? So I'm going to have to bolt, so.
Thank you.
I'll come back if.
Thanks, Mitch.
Possible, yeah.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the city clerk treasurer.
Nope, I'll get the fire department.
Oh, did I, oh, sorry Doug. We have the fire department, the monthly report and.
Sorry, I was putting Kyle on before I came, so. All dirty. Only thing I have is we did get approved for a grant for $40,000 for new radios, beans ours are getting, we need batteries and a bunch of different things, they're kind of nickel and diming us. So we just applied for the grant and we were fortunate enough to get it. So I need approval to go ahead and purchase the $40,000 of the radios to get.
It's sounding like there are a lot of applicants for that grant.
Yes, I know Glenwood told me about it and they didn't get it, so I feel kind of bad. Karen Anderson did, yep.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the, of the Motorola radios.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Swenson and Councilor Gorder to second it. Any questions or discussion? So that grant covers nearly all of the purchase price, so. Okay. Questions, discussion, okay. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Does anyone have anything for me, or are we good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Doug?
Nope, that's it.
Are you going to take her out to dinner or something for writing that grant for you guys?
We pay her.
Oh. Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I seen fire trucks at the nursing home on Sunday, what was that?
They had a water main.
Water main?
Yeah. It was in their alarm system, so. Yep.
Thank you. Okay. Now we'll go on to the clerk.
The only thing I had is to let everyone know that we received a grant from Pope County for the treatment of invasive species in the marina. It was 80% of our costs and we got $6,038, so we thank them.
Okay. Okay.
We skipped Randy.
Next on the agenda is planning and zoning.
We skipped Randy.
Oh, did I skip, where did I skip? Oh, way down the bottom.
Lowry did finish our dock frames up for next year, so we got them all picked up, they're back at the shop, so we're ready to go for the docks for next year, so. I'll probably get quotes for the floats for next month and get those coming so that hopefully we don't have, have to wait for them and hold us up a year or something like, has happened in the past, so. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any information about the lead water testing and stuff like that?
No, it's, it's, it's just kind of on the heels of the Flint, Michigan thing where the state of Minnesota is just kind of taking the initiative to take some steps to just kind of make the public aware of, you know, possible contamination or that kind of thing. It's nothing to be concerned about, I've got a lot of calls on it, a lot of people that get a letter and just think their water's unsafe right away. There really isn't any change from how it's been in the past, we do all the tests that the state tells us to, and all the results are in the newspaper every year for consumer confidence reports. So it's just nothing out of the ordinary, it's just the, the state kind of taking steps to make people aware and kind of cover themselves, so.
Have you tested those, the 27, you know which places they are, have you?
Oh, most of them are galvanized lines, we only have three lead service lines in town, so. And a lot of the ones that are galvanized, to my knowledge, a lot of them are probably just galvanized up into the basement where it goes through the concrete and under the foundation. And I would guess a lot of them are probably copper on the backside of that or plastic, but you don't know until you dig them up, but. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Now we can move on to planning and zoning and see if it's on the agenda. It was a request by the NADUs to annex out of the city limits, they have property on the north side of Starbuck. Just north of the water plant and, and east of the water, northeast of the water plant, I should say. And planning and zoning, I heard from them today. And Joan, maybe you want to inform the council what their decision was, or what they decided?
Yeah, planning and zoning denied their request to be annexed out of the city, so. I don't know, the council wants to discuss it or make a motion on it.
They haven't been provided with the, all the information or anything of it?
They've got the maps and the request by the NADUs where it is.
Is it? They said White Bear Lake is more than willing to have them as part of White Bear Lake.
This is the parcel that earlier this year, the council approved a variance for them to do their own water and sewer. And then, so today they said since they didn't have city water and sewer, they thought they, you know, should be annexed out of the, or could be. It was, they were asking to be annexed out of the city, so.
Does this open a situation where other people on the borders of towns can then start requesting to be annexed from the city as well?
Could possibly.
And, I mean, goal of cities are to grow and to get bigger, we don't want to lose, you know.
Then we'd have to re-annex it back in if we did any other future growing that direction.
Yeah, I just, I'm nervous about opening the box to, starting to basically get rid of parts of the city of Starbuck. And I think for that reason, I'd probably follow the planning and zoning's recommendation and.
And I think generally, we've said too on these situations, that if water and sewer becomes available, they need to hook up. So I guess I, I'd have to go along with the planning and zoning and deny that request, if it was me. I, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but White Bear Lake sure wants the tax money for, and, and so do we. So I guess at this point, I'd make a motion that we deny the request for them to leave the city.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Gorder to approve the planning and zoning's decision to deny the request. And seconded by Councilor Bockel. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the airport committee, Tom Buikens, I don't know if you had anything, Tom? Okay, okay. You know, streets and parks, I know Chris had a, a meeting on Saturday. So I don't know if you want to say anything about it, or if that, new suggestions or new ideas?
Well, you know they do, Karen. Do you want me to come up there?
Please.
I'm just thinking stuff for the, all right. So we had nine people that could make the meeting and another nine that couldn't make the meeting. I understand Saturday at 8:30 is not everybody's ideal time to get up and go someplace, but that's what it worked. Linda Hoffman was kind enough to open up the chamber office, and that's where we.
where we held it. And it was just a conversation about, you know, boy, if we could do anything, what would be some things that we would like to see at our, at our park, and some really great conversations. And, and keeping in mind, just keeping it as an hour, to be true to our words, just kind of identified maybe some different areas, and, you know, like if you're interested in, I don't know, the shelters and, you know, the adopter shelter, whatever. But as we talked, we thought, well, let's meet again at December seventh, and in that conversation came, well, what about if we did some holiday decorating down at the city park? And, you know, again, pretty short notice, and there, there won't be a city council meeting beforehand, and we can't just go willy-nilly and decorate the park without your approval, but they, and it may not even come to be, but the thought is, again, we meet nine to ten, and if anybody wants to come and help out, we would love to do some sort of decorating down at the park for the holiday. I don't know what that means, I don't know what that entails, other than they thought it would be a fun kind of community and have it look a little Christmasy down there. And that's all I know. I mean, that, that's where it left.
I talked to Chris a little bit, and I thought, you know, if she got the, the Park Board to participate in the December seventh meeting, then, you know, they could have their meeting, and then we could have them on the council, or on the council agenda for the Monday meeting, and decide what, what we want to do, so.
You said, Dex, made down there all the time?
Well, that's what some of the, you know, the, yep, they said they used to have decorations and, and down there, and so, like Sue Fraas said, she has still the old First National big wreath that they used to hang out in front of the bank, you know, maybe hang that up, and so that was her, you know, thing. Not a dumping ground for Christmas stuff you don't want and not going to come back and pick up. But, I mean, that was like, something like that, to hang, you know, maybe on the ban shelf or on one of the shelters.
No lights or anything like that?
I guess it all depends on what, you know, what we could do, what we shouldn't do.
Was grass used to, with the tractor? Nancy, I remember Nancy and Greg Rapp and them, you know, because I was down there, so we did certain trees and things, and I can't remember if Fraas was, I know he did the one up by the deep, didn't do it down by the park?
Yeah, we did long poles.
Huh?
We used long poles.
Long poles.
I imagine Sue has a little in with him.
Wasn't there, wasn't there one year where we had terrible winds and it, because kind of ruined all the decorations?
Yep. And I mean, and that group would have to be responsible. If the wind whipped everything around, you got to go pick it up before it ends up in Benson. You know, that's just something that you do.
How many electrical hookups are down there?
A lot.
I'm sure.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple electrical panels put in, just for lights, yeah.
There's quite a few on the south side, and I think each, each shelter has electrical.
All the shelters.
Did you see Randy more on the south side?
More on the shelters than where the electrical hookups are.
So maybe to run lights there. I don't, you know, we don't need a five thousand dollar light bill either. I, you know, looking for direction.
I think that's a nice idea, and I don't see why you wouldn't want to pursue that.
Yeah, I, I think the idea is good. The biggest thing is if the people are willing to do it, type of thing, so.
I think they should, no, go ahead, go ahead with the meeting, and then we'll put you on the agenda for December.
So do not decorate the seventh, then, after the meeting?
What's that?
I said do not decorate on the seventh, correct?
Because it might be kind of late after.
I was going to say, I would say decorate. I, I'm fine with decorating.
Would it be okay if I go with Randy down to the park and find out, like, what outlets could be used, and, and talk about, like, if we did put up lights, like, how long the timer should go? I mean, what, what's reasonable and that kind of a thing?
So you'd have to do a lot of organizing before your meeting?
Well, yeah, not that tough. I don't know, how long do you talk, Randy? Are you a big talker, or you think we can get this done in a short period of time?
Or we can drive around and see whether our outlets.
Yeah.
I don't know, would you have volunteers that would come and plug everything in at sunset, come back at ten o'clock?
I, I would just.
I assumed I would use timers, like I do at home.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are those one-inconsistent though, the timers?
Yeah.
The ones I use, yeah, are. I mean, they're on the north side of my house, they'll work anywhere.
And it's just a photo eye, so as soon as it gets dusk, they click on.
Yeah.
Do you have any, does anyone in the council have any issues with color restrictions? I mean, like, I don't want to over govern that, but, you know. Just have a bunch of, right? Make sure we're not doing something that.
I guess worst-case scenario, if it looks like a piece of crap, you tell us to take it down, and we take it down.
You got a good idea, and I think, just to see if like you're sitting back giving a tour, or not.
Donating up Halloween lights, basically, is kind of where I'm getting at.
Oh, yes, yep. Or, you know, eight-foot Santa that's going to blow away to Benson, yeah. Yeah. And like I said, I'm assuming with the first year, it's probably going to be pretty small. If we get that wreath up, I'll be a happy girl.
And you just have one or two of those shelters.
Yeah.
So you making a motion?
I'll make it a motion that they can move forward with decorating the park for Christmas.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Well, great, thank you. Let's hope it gets decorated.
So I have a motion by Counselor Tafe to go ahead with approving decoration of the park for Christmas, and seconded by Counselor Christensen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. So move on to new business. The first item is to approve sending non-payment of administrative citations for blight and fire calls to the tax rolls at ten percent interest.
I'll make a motion to approve sending the non-payment of administration citations for blight and fire calls to the tax rolls at ten percent.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Tafe to approve sending the non-payment of administrative citations for blight and fire calls to the tax rolls at ten percent interest, seconded by Counselor Balko. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item is to approve Resolution 2024-28 to accept an anonymous donation towards the Starbuck Marina Lighthouse Fund.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-28 to accept an anonymous donation to the lighthouse fund.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Christensen to approve Resolution 2024-28, accepting anonymous donation towards the Starbuck Marina Lighthouse Fund, seconded by Counselor Balko. Any questions or discussion?
I'd like to thank whoever did that, I guess, and that's.
Yes, uh, yes, they didn't want to be, uh, publicized. There's no questions or discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item is to approve Resolution 2024-29, canvassing the November fifth, twenty twenty-four election results.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-29, canvassing November fifth, twenty twenty-four election results.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Christensen to approve Resolution 2024-29, canvassing the November fifth, twenty twenty-four election results, seconded by Counselor Tafe. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is to discuss the new cannabis ordinance. Planning and zoning has had a couple of sessions to discussing this, and we discussed it today at planning and zoning, and so Joan passed out an updated version of the ordinance, and it's something we'll have to decide on in November, because we have to post it for thirty days in the newspaper before it becomes effective. And it has to be effective before January first, or it's wide open to anybody, so. So what I was going to suggest is that you look this over, and, and that we have it as an item on our special meeting that we have to have on the budget and so forth. Joan, we could just table it for tonight? Any disagreement or questions on that?
No, I think tabling it is a good idea.
I think, you know, it's kind of long, you know, just getting it today, too, and I'd like to take some time to read over it and stuff, but immediately noticing that Pope County would take main jurisdiction over any licensing.
We've been waiting for Pope County for a long time, and they haven't decided yet what they're going to do, so.
Yeah, I think.
So if, if we keep waiting for them, we're going to be in trouble.
I don't want to leave it wide open January first, either.
Yeah. So. Okay. Okay, uh, there's no further questions or discussion. Uh, next item on the agenda is to schedule a preliminary budget work session, and, or twenty twenty-five preliminary budget schedule work session, or would it be a special meeting?
Well, if you want to discuss, it'll be a special meeting if we're going to discuss the cannabis ordinance then also.
Right, right, yeah. So we're kind of looking at Tuesday, November nineteenth, because we want to get it done as soon as possible.
That would work for me.
That would work for me.
But, I don't know, noon would work for everybody, or?
I would not be able to make the nineteenth one.
You wouldn't?
No.
How about the twentieth?
The twentieth, I, yeah, that one's way better.
Twentieth, I can't be there.
Okay. How about the eighteenth, which is a Monday?
I can do that.
I can do that?
Yeah, I can, I can make that one work at noon, the eighteenth.
Eighteenth, I'm good.
Monday, the eighteenth? Okay. So, well, if everybody approves, we'll set it for Monday, the eighteenth of November at noon.
That's next week already.
It's next week already, yeah. And, yeah. Okay, next item on the agenda is to approve Resolution 2024-30, accepting a memorial donation from the Meyer family for the Starbuck Marina Lighthouse Fund in memory of Bob Friesen, so.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2024-30.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman, or Counselor Tafe to approve Resolution 2024-30, accepting a memorial donation from the Meyer family for the Starbuck Marina Lighthouse Fund in memory of Bob Friesen, uh, seconded by Counselor Balko. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is to approve annual inter-fund transfer from Hobo Park for twenty twenty-four.
I'll make the motion to approve the annual inter-transfer fund, or inter-fund transfer from Hobo Park for twenty twenty-four.
I'll second the motion.
So I have a motion by Counselor Tafe to approve the annual inter-fund transfer from Hobo Park for twenty twenty-four, uh, seconded by Counselor Christensen. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, so we'll close our regular council meeting at seven fourteen, and go into closed session. And the regular meeting will resume after the closed session.